Tonight, we're grateful for the opportunity to live here in this county. We're grateful to be able to associate with one another. We pray thy spirit may be here with us this night to guide us in our decisions and our discussion, that we'll be able to be mindful of those who have applications and things which will better and benefit our county. We're grateful indeed for all that does. We say it in Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any questions on the agenda for tonight? If not, take a motion.
I move to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
One second. Hit the wrong button. Okay, any conflicts of interest from anybody in the planning commission for anything on the agenda tonight? No? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and go into public comment. So we'll open it up for the public to comment on anything and everything in the county, if you'd like to. Nothing? Okay, so we're gonna move out of public comment and move on to discussion item number six, the nurturing nest preschool conditional use permit.
Okay. Good evening.
Hi.
So the application before you is a home occupation conditional use permit. The applicant is Tammy Garn, right? So she is requesting to do a preschool inside her home. You have the narrative there. She's also here, so she can speak to any concerns that you may have. The conditions that we have, the staff has placed upon this conditional use permit comes straight from the code. There's, you know, there's concerns with traffic, obviously. It isn't a cul-de-sac. Parking is another concern. And so we have the regulations from our code to direct that. So as long as she can mitigate those concerns, then staff recommends approval for this conditional use permit. Just, so here with the, I'll just show you kind of where it's at. It's in Rollins Ranch. The general plan is village low density. It's in a P R E B, RR1 is the zone, underlying zone. She's proposing a preschool of about 10 to eight, eight to 10 students, two and a half hours per day, two days a week, with the potential to add an additional class during a different time of day and/or day of week. And then she, she's not planning on going more than that. She is right here in Rawhide Court. So here's Old Highway, Rollins Ranch, and then this second cul-de-sac in Rollins Ranch here. She's at the end. And so she does, she does give a traffic plan that's in the packet. And so just pick up and drop off. One condition that we did feel that was necessary, and she does have very accommodating neighbors. You'll see, you'll also see that she has gone and spoken to each one of her neighbors. She's done a lot of due diligence in that to make sure the neighbors were okay with her plan. But the one concern that we had was parking. And although she has a plan for that as far as parking, her parents live here, is that correct? And she's talked to her other neighbors that they would be able to utilize their driveways for parking. Our code doesn't allow that. And so if she has a special event or she wants to do an activity with the parents of the children that are attending her preschool, we recommend the condition of approval to be that she goes to a place that would accommodate that kind of traffic and that kind of parking. And so she does have the parking for the preschool for, you know, two to three parking stalls there in her driveway during the time that she has those classes. And so staff recommends that that, just that extra condition, and it is in your staff report. But other than that, staff recommends approval. The applicant is here to answer any other questions that you may have.
Thanks. Do you guys have any questions for staff?
So I'm just curious, how long is this CUP good for, Gina?
It runs with the land. So long as she can, I mean, our code doesn't give a, an expiration date any longer. So if there is a complaint, we have to review the conditional use permit. But so long as the conditional, so long as she continues to use this in perpetuity, as long as she lives there, she doesn't get to go move down the street and take that conditional use permit with her. She would have to re-imply for a new residence. The conditional use permits stay with the land. So.
Let me press, by saying I don't really have a problem with this, but I am curious, what happens if people buy and sell in there?
And that, that was one of our concerns. We did talk to Mark about that. It's kind of difficult with any kind of land use like a conditional use permit to notify the neighbors of that use happening, especially in a home occupation. You know, the dance studio was a big, was a big deal.
That's what I was thinking of.
You know, it's difficult to monitor that. Again, conditional use, the county changed their code to not have to renew those unless there is a complaint. And so she does have to renew her business license every year. And at that time, we take a look at it, if the use has changed at all significantly. If, you know, if we've had legitimate, you know, zoning violation complaints, then we will investigate those things. But our code doesn't necessarily give any timeline as far as how long that conditional car can, can additional use permit.
So with eight to 10 students, there'd be eight to 10, I guess that's reflected in that eight to 10 cars.
Correct.
Both.
Right. So if you remember, if you remember, rewind back to the dance studio, the definition of vehicle trip is a drop-off is a, is one trip. A pickup is one trip. So there's two trips per child per day. And so if they do a max of 16 children per day, like our code allows for, that's 32 vehicle trips per day. So long as she doesn't go over what her plan is, and she proposes to change any of that, she'll have to come and renew that conditional use permit, and we'll have to reevaluate it at that time. Does that help?
Just out of curiosity, what is the cutoff on students when they become?
It's, it's youth, I think it's 18 is my understanding. I mean, if I, I, the one I have to go by is the, the dance studio. And so it's, the definition in our code is preschool-aged children. It defines child activities, and a child according to our government is that until they're 18 years old. So.
No, what I was curious about, sorry. Like at the dance studio, how many students before there's a, is there a limit on how many?
Yeah, 16. 16 per day.
Okay.
So it's, it's kind of, Debbie and I kind of went over that code a little bit, and it's up to, up to eight children per session, and then up to, I mean, 32 children per day, but you can only have 32 vehicle trips. So it kind of scales it back, and with that math, it scales it back to eight, to eight children per day.
You could drop off three kids and have more kids and reduce your vehicle.
Right. And she will have a lot of foot traffic. Several of her students, she states, is, is from her neighbors and within her neighborhood. And so that, but we can't, we can't evaluate it based off of that. We have to evaluate it based on each participant, participating child will be dropped off eventually at one time or another with weather and so forth.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Anybody want to hear from the applicant?
I'm good.
No? Any discussion? If not, there's no discussion, is anybody ready for a motion on this?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the nurturing nest preschool category three home occupation conditional use permit application number 19-021 located at approximately 6056 Rawhide Court, allowing for a home occupation of preschool based on the findings and with the conditions listed in the staff report dated June 13th, 2019.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Unless you did want to talk about that. You're more than wel, I should have given you an opportunity, you're more than welcome to say something.
Thank you.
Okay, item number seven, flaglot ordinance.
Good evening. This is just a continuation from our May ninth meeting. We discussed the draft flaglot ordinance. We didn't have time to wrap it up that night, and I think we just want to give everyone a chance to think about the discussion. I think, I don't know, Gina has listed in the staff report the seven concerns, the kind of the topics of the impact on the general plan, allowing increased flexibility in subdivision design, purpose, areas where it would be appropriate, limitations in zones, acreage. And so that's kind of what we talked about. I don't know how much you want me to go into that, but just kind of pick it up tonight of where we'd like to go. You have the draft ordinance from last week. We gave out paper copies, everybody could see it.
Yep.
If there's questions about that, I think we're kind of discussing, how do we want to handle this? The council has asked us to look into, ask you, the planning commission, to look into this, whether it's a good idea or not, and how you would recommend to go forward.
Okay.
Back over to you.
Thank you. So let's start a discussion about this amongst ourselves. Last time we talked about this, council asked us to look into the feasibility, is that fair, of a flaglot ordinance?
Yeah.
So staff adopted an ordinance, we went back and forth editing that ordinance. Then last, or two meetings ago, we had some discussion about, is this a necessary thing? Do we see a need for this in the county right now? And people were mostly agreeing that there was no need for it. So I'll tell you, I'll start with my opinion. My opinion is that the timing's not right. I don't, I don't think there's a need for this in the county right now. I think we should forward, make a motion to the effect of, we've reviewed the council's request, and we don't feel like it's time, they're necessary to have flaglot ordinance. That's, that's where I'm at. What's your, what are your thoughts on what we should do?
I agree. I don't think it's feasible for, I think we're opening ourselves up for more than we want by controlling it.
I agree. I don't think a flaglot ordinance, I think flaglots in certain situations are okay, and I'd rather address that as another vehicle, like a flexible subdivision ordinance with development agreements, but not to blanket the county with the ordinance.
I agree. Blanketing the county is what I don't think is right.
In my opinion, it's kind of mixed, I guess, in a way. I want to be able to say some things before something starts happening and gets out of hand, but on the other hand, yeah, I feel like I don't want to put this blanket over the county saying this is what we are going to do and open it up to possibilities that may not be, I don't know, undesirable.
Right. I guess, well, the good thing is we've done the work, staff has done the work, we've gone back and forth with the ordinance, Gina. So we, if it's something we can, it's certainly something we can address in the future. Steve?
I've already spoken my mind pretty clearly. I can see a need for it in specific areas. Having said that, I don't know how you, if you pass an ordinance like this, I don't know how you police that, or, I mean, I know I've heard people come in and say the plannings on the commission can approve or deny anything without any particular reason, if I understood them correctly. But to blanket statement that their county's open for business on flaglots, I probably wouldn't vote for that, so just reiterate what I said.
Chris?
I think there are other tools they have if they want flaglots, particularly development agreements or easements. And I could just see this turning into them building up every hillside that they can using flaglots, and is probably the wrong tool if we want to keep the view sheds and whatnot, you know, looking good.
Okay. Sounds like we're on the same page. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll give it a stab. I move that we direct staff to inform the county council that the planning commission does not think a flaglot ordinance is appropriate at this time.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Me too. None opposed? Item number eight, public comments from the Wasatch Peaks Open House and Information Meeting. So, I'm sorry.
No, no. Do you want me to do an introductory, or you guys?
Sure. Well, we were all here, right? So overall, I think it was, it was a very good meeting, very, very positive, I'm very positive the way people handled each other, so to speak. The major concerns that are my, that I think we took away were question of taxes, water, traffic, limited public use, view shed, and, can't read my handwriting. General, not general plan.
General preservation.
Yeah, just general preservation of the land so that it meets the scope of the general plan. In addition to that, I know that kind of, does that kind of summarize the comments cards and what you guys heard? Did you bring anything else down?
Concern-wise?
Yeah, concern-wise. The big one was, the big one was obviously water and view shed, and is it a compatible use? There's been some, some letters, some letters, Morgan County News as well, letters to the editor, that kind of support that, that view that is this compatible with the general plan? So I guess, okay.
I was gonna say, the feeling, it was kind of split. I don't, I don't think it, it was all negative.
No.
I think we, we got a, kind of a split.
Yeah, we did, probably. If, if anything, it was more of a, probably positive, negative, and then neutral in the middle with concerns. And even, even the positives were with concerns for these things, right?
To make sure, yeah.
Make sure that we.
Address all those.
Address, yeah, address all those things. So I think, I mean, we're planning on having a public hearing, and we'll see where it goes from there. I mean, ideally, we would forward a recommendation at that meeting, provided that the application is complete and all those other things. But I'd like to, tonight, just, just kind of talk about these things. How can we get ahead of these things before the next meeting? How can we address these things? Have, have you presented any of these things, or did you get any feedback from, from Wasatch Peaks about these kind of, these topics?
Well, I think it's important, maybe we just back up a little bit and say, the resort special district application requires a fiscal impact analysis. So they've had a, and I think everybody just needs to understand all the work that's gone on behind the scenes.
Yeah.
And I think the Wasatch Peaks did a good job of saying how long they've been working on it. And it really goes back almost two years, but in the last year, they've worked particularly intensive. So they presented their fiscal impact analysis. The county then hired an outside third-party economic company, I think they wanted to give a pass by that, but consultant, to look at and review that. They've reviewed it and made their own proposal, and this all come out in the staff report. So I don't, I mean, and both of those say that there's a positive economic impact, which is what's the standard. So they've done that. They've done a infrastructure plan. Here's how that's going to work. That's a big item, especially for that larger area. They've done a traffic analysis and submitted that as part of their application. They've got a draft development agreement. And so what we wanted to hear at the meeting on the 23rd, and again, on the 27th, we just wanted to get a better picture of what the community concerns were. The staff will analyze the code and the issues that are out there, and say, well, this is actually what we have from the applicant, and make recommendations based on what we have received. Some areas we might, staff might find deficient, and you guys find okay, and county council finds okay. There might be areas where staff thinks we're okay, and, you know, it might go both ways. But that will be the process of going through them. So the process will be, we've got their application, we're going to review it, try and get that staff report next Thursday, so that you can have that weekend to review it. It will not be small, it will be a big report. But, and then we'll have all the facts and we can analyze them, and go from there. There's been a lot of work on the water, on traffic, taxes, and the applicant will give us, is working on a view shed analysis that we should have, that'll go in the packet. We don't have, we don't, we don't get it before the 20th, which is when the packet will go out, but we will get it. So you guys will be able to look at all the information we have and see how it relates to the ordinance. So, and I don't think there's any major surprises or issues from the public, but we want to be sure. We want the public to know that, you know, we want them to be aware of what's going on and be able to weigh in one way or the other. Because the general plan amendment and rezone, which is what the resort special district application is for, is a legislative act. And so they're requesting it, we're processing it, the planning commission makes a recommendation to the county council for the final decision. So if there's areas of concern that we have, but generally okay, we'll put something in the development agreement to address that. I think there'd be a lot of ways to do that. However, if you feel it's just not appropriate for that area, you can go that way as well. Some of these things can be addressed with conditions as well, for conditional approval. Well, the conditions would only be, you can't condition rezones or general plans per se, but because the resort special district allows for a development agreement and not allows for, requires, a development agreement, any element can be addressed in that development agreement. So that's where their design standards for the buildings that we've talked about, they are, you know, they're not going to have pink buildings with shiny metal roofs out there in the forest. That will not be allowed. Now, that's just if you want to pick one. But there are, there are elements in there that we're trying to make sure minimize the impact that we can. We've just got to analyze all the information we have and see where we land as far as.
So most of the public's concerns should be addressed in the application.
Correct.
At least the ones you mentioned there are part of the code that they have to address.
Division of water rights, they've worked on that. Going back, you know, there's a lot of detail that we'll get into when we do a subdivision plan in the area or something like that. This is a little higher bar for a rezone. That's.
If I may, Lance, I'm curious, today's June 14th, is that right?
13th.
13th. So how much of this is already in the public? I, I'm not very computer literate, so you tell me how much of this.
We've created a website, our consultant put it out, and all the application materials are on.
So the plans for how quick they're going to develop and how many roads they're going to put in are in that?
The roads are there.
The plan for the roads.
The concept plan, there's, but it's high level, so they don't even know where the lotting's going to be.
So that, that's my question. So today's the 14th. When are they expecting the planning commission to digest all this and be able to come up with an answer of recommending this to the council?
So we've had that application, and it's been posted online for anybody to look at.
But what about the details? That's what I'm asking.
And that, that staff report will come out on the 20th.
So on the 20th, I get the staff report, and I'm supposed to have my decision made by what date?
And then we'll have a public hearing on the 27th. So you'll have the staff report.
So seven days.
And then you'll have the meeting to discuss it. And you guys can decide at that point.
What I'm suggesting is, seven days is pretty short for me. I don't know, I'm not speaking in front of anyone else, but it's short for me, especially something, how thick do you think this is going to be?
Well, we have the application available.
Right. I'm asking the details of it, Debbie. I'm saying, when are the roads going to go in? What part of development are we agreeing to say, okay, A, B, C, D, can go ahead and we're going to let them have?
All, all this is, is if you're going to let them change to a special resort district or keep it, or it's that.
It's just a rezone right now, not the development agreement.
The details won't be until later on.
Okay.
So if, were you a part of the Snow Basin decision, Steve?
A little bit, not much.
So the way that the, the Snow Basin decision happened is they submitted their application for the rezone, and they actually, they did the, it was approved with a ordinance, the rezone was, they can back and amend it to add a development agreement. So that's kind of how Snow Basin happened, is, this is, like I said, the high level. The details are going to come with that development.
So how long will we have from the time that they present their paperwork to the time we have to get our homework done? How, how long would you give?
They submitted most of this information on March 7th, and it's been out there available, probably, I don't think we've got it out there until April.
So after we give them the RSD agreement, when will we have to vote to port a positive or negative recommendation to the council?
Well, that's the point, guys. The application will be presented on the 27th. You may or may not decide that night that you're ready to say yes or no to it. You may say you want more information and come back. That would be your prerogative as the planning.
But I think Steve's probably asking about the development agreement. Are you asking when that will come?
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm trying, I'm not very good at saying what I think, but.
I think, that's how I understood it, not the rezone, but.
Well, the development agreement is part of the rezone.
Right.
So the, with the resort special district process that's outlined in Morgan County Code, we're taking all this information in, and we're going to amend the general plan, we're going to rezone this property, and all that will be done with a development agreement that will guide more of the details. And where the development agreement doesn't address something, then it goes back to Morgan County Code. So the development agreement is part of that approval.
Right. So when we recommended to the council that they pass it to an RSD, then the ball's rolling at that point in time. That's when the development agreement's going to start being made, right?
After the county, you make the recommendation to the county council. If the county council approves it, then, all right, now we're going.
Do we have the development agreement?
And the development agreement will govern.
And that's what I, that's what I'm curious about.
It's their application, it's their development agreement.
Given the RSD, then all of a sudden, the ball's rolling, and I don't know where the ball is going, so they can come up with their own. I'm just suggesting back to you that whatever's in that development agreement, we're going to have to approve it. We're supposed to read it, digest it, and make a, and that's, we have control over how long that takes, right? Is that what you're telling me? Okay.
And the development agreement is their application.
It's already, yeah.
So the file that you made available to us in April. So the file that you made available to us in April?
Is the development agreement.
That's what we're making a decision on.
Yes, it's the...
It's a 339 page.
Yes.
Right. So it's got, it's concept plan, traffic study, economic study, infrastructure plan, and development agreement.
But then they will also come forward with subdivision applications.
Okay, so...
So I think that needs to be explained.
You approve the RSD, and then, and now, okay, now, you have to, they have to come back and do subdivisions, they have to come back and do building permits, and there'll be other requirements in there as well. They've got to do, give utility lines in, and we need to test that sort of thing. I mean, there's state, the federal agencies that are involved. The big question for Morgan County is, do you want to, in this configuration that they presented, with their concept plan, sixty, over sixty, almost seventy percent, over seventy percent open space, do you, is it something that Morgan County wants to change their general plan for and rezone this property for? Then the development agreement and those details would guide that, from that point forward. Snow Basin does this, Valens Ranch is a development agreement, Cottonlands is a development agreement. So, I mean, this is a higher, bigger project for like town makers.
I, I get that, and I, I don't want to speak for the whole commission. I'm just suggesting back to you, I've heard that there's, they want this passed quickly. And so what I'm saying is, I want time to make sure that whatever's in the development agreement is favorable to Morgan County. I don't want to be pressured in a week to make my decision.
So have, have you, you been able to have access to that, to the stuff beforehand? Because we can, is there any way we could print it tonight? Let's, let us see.
Well, I, I know that part of it. What I'm saying back to you is, the devil's in the details, and I'm saying back to you as far as what roads are going to be built when, and how quickly is, are they going to want the aid, are they going to do them all at one time? I, I remember back when Revalla was passed, I remember raising these objections then, and I was assured that they had the money to do what they wanted to do. It would all be, and structure would be laid in. I, I don't, it's a whole different ballgame now.
So is the, I think you're asking like for a timeline and stuff? Is that going to be?
Thank you, I need, I need her to help me out.
No, I'm kind of, no.
I, I'm grateful, really.
Is that, I think that's what you're asking?
Yeah, I am.
And you want the timeline of the details?
I do.
And that is not in this?
Right. That's my question.
Like Revalla's easy one to pick on, they had 10 years to submit their concept plan. They submitted it right at the tenure.
Right.
To keep their development agreement alive for another two years.
Right. So here's my worst-case scenario, and this is my, I guess, maybe I'm trying to say it again. We approve this, the county approves it, and they go in and start building roads, and the economy goes south. What, the development agreement's going to address that, those issues at that point in time, right?
For the most part.
Because you're saying, in essence, once we pass the RSD, they're entitled?
They don't have the requirement to do certain things in a certain timeframe.
Certain order.
Certain order or a certain timeframe, really. I don't, I've got to reread it again. But I don't, I don't believe it's in there that, well, within five years, you will do this. It's, we're kind of giving them a much bigger window and allowing them to...
So what protects us?
They want the economic. What protects us?
What protects us from Steve's concerns, you know? That they make these plans, they've put a couple roads in, the economy turns.
Is, this is a pri, they're, everything's private, where Revalla did have some public roads, and the other development agreements involve public infrastructure.
So they can't do anything, and then this is for you guys to analyze and discuss, but if they, if they don't do anything, what's the harm to the county as, you know?
Is that what you're saying?
Well, I guess the harm to the county is, we have a pristine, beautiful mountain, and all of a sudden, we've got roads cut up in there, and we've got lots and infrastructure put in there, and to me, that's the concern. I just, I would like to know what they can finance. I, I don't want, hearing I'm telling what people can do with their money, but I, I really don't want a big eyesore up there that nobody can buy or sell. That's my concern.
And that's the purpose tonight, is to hear that concern, so we have to make sure we address it as best we can.
And that they, the applicant can address it to us.
Yeah, and, and so we can raise the issue in the staff report, the applicant can respond. Maybe they say, well, this is how it's going to happen, and don't worry, and that satisfies you? Maybe they don't have a good answer. So that'll be part of the vetting process, and so that's why we're doing this.
If they can't sell it, and I know I'm way out in the future, but if they can't sell it, I could see them coming back and wanting to change it to where they can sell it, more lots, more roads. That's what I'm saying back to you.
Then we, we can say no.
So this, to me, I, I like what Steve's saying, not pushing through this, because this is a major thing for Morgan, you know, to affect, and we don't want any mistakes. I got quite a few concerns with it for me. One is, we've always been, you know, me, from the meetings, I've been under the impression that it was secondary, third, fourth, you know, homes, that there's no primary residents up there. But what I'm hearing is fed, federal law says that you can't do that. You can't just say that it's secondary, so is there going to be a chance that we're going to have primary residents up there? And an example, and I don't know, I'm just going off from what I heard from an individual, so I'm asking questions and putting it out there. But they're talking about some of these people, and this is a lady, her aunt is one of those that has two, three homes, and this is the way they get around it, is they take and pay someone a couple hundred bucks a month to stay in their house, and then they treat it as a primary residence. And so you're going to take up here, we're banking off of getting money for secondary, third, fourth homes, and they're turning into primary residents, and now you got your taxes cut in half. So...
But I don't think they can, oh, go ahead.
Let me jump in. So what we can hear tonight is the concerns you have, just like that, that's perfect. And so we can try and make sure we get that addressed in the staff report.
Yeah, and that's...
And then we can discuss it at the public hearing. We can't get into that discussion tonight because it hasn't been advertised as a public hearing. The applicant's not here to provide answers, so we need to be careful in that, please let me know your concerns, hey, I want to see this, I'm curious about the details and the timing, is what I'm hearing from Steve. Primary residents, how are they going to be maintained? And, and I want to hear those concerns, but I can't, we can't go beyond that tonight.
Right, and, and that's fine. It's just, these are just some of the concerns, because I'd, I'd like to be able to have them addressed so that we're not sitting in our public hearing, because it's going to be, the one the other night went pretty good, but it was the information. This one's going to have a little bit more meat to it when the public's involved, and now it's, we're decision time. So that, that's one concern. The other concern with it is, have we got any information from other counties? And I mean, the counties like Yellowstone Club, and there's a couple others out there, where what impact has it done to their county? You know, financially, or what else has it done? Anything for us to compare with that's come from actual county, you know, themselves? If we had any information like that, I think would help. Because this is a new...
And we do.
Okay, good. That's one thing in the staff. Had a couple others, I got to think what they were. The other one, just a concern for me also, is the time like Steve's talking about, they're talking about being able to self-maintain this, but that's not going to be for over a period of time, that they're going to be able to do that. So if this project goes on for 20, 30 years, who's going to help support it till they're up fully running it? So what's the impact going to be on Morgan County until that is actually there? And then the concern is if the, the economy goes south, which, you know, it very well could, then what's that going to do to the county for liability? So my, my concern with the whole thing, and I think they have a, a good project going, and they've done hard work and everything, everything seems up front, but you never know. Everything could change once the county puts the stamp on it. To me, this right now is the most crucial part of the whole application. And that, once we pass this, the special resort district, in the sense, we've put them in control, and now we're going to go with what they've got. And so this is not a time to change into special resort district unless we're 100% comfortable in what we do.
With the application.
With the application. Because soon as we change it to the special resort district, it's not, you'll never get it back. So I think as many of these concerns can be answered and resolved, I like Ed, you know, I think they're been good to work with and everything, but they don't live here.
So, we still talk about more concerns, but I'm just trying to get an idea what the night's going to be, going to look like. We heard from the public last meeting, we're kind of summarizing the public's concerns, our own concerns. I'd like to, before we open it for public hearing, I'd like to kind of address some of these concerns myself. You know, so the public understands that we're, hey, we're capturing these questions now. That way we don't hear all of it, you know, with the public hearing. Is there, is there a way to do that well?
Well, that's the point of the staff report, is to address the concerns. As, as outlined, the staff report will go through the ordinance, and the requirements in the ordinance and the requirements, those elements, state how everything's going to be addressed, similar to the way we do it on everything else. What will be unique about this application, we'll have a section of concerns heard at the public meeting. Wasatch Peak trans is already taken and prepared to frequently ask questions, section is posted on their website in response to those questions, so it's on their website. But the staff report will contain all this information, and, and the concerns and the issues, and here's where we stand. Water. Is it a concern? This is why it is or isn't? This is what we, I mean, that's the public hearing process and the application process.
I just want to make sure we communicate that well to the public, that they know that we, we heard their concerns, that we also have concerns, that we've, we've addressed them in the staff report. Maybe Wasatch Peaks can, when, when they speak to that, they can focus on those, those concerns, so we can get answers, so we're not asking the same questions over and over.
One more concerned question, too. One, when this all started coming about, they were proposing around 450 units or whatever you want to say. The number now has jumped to 750, and I've heard even that maybe to 1,000. So...
The application's for 750.
750 is the application. So that, that would be the max.
And I, I remember them talking about that at the beginning of the...
They were going to put in infrastructure for 750.
Right.
But they planned on 450.
They said their plan was 450.
I believe the, their fiscal analysis was based off of 450. That's where you're getting the 450 from.
Yeah, maybe.
They're just aiming low to show you what it could be. It sounds like, right?
Yeah, it sounds like that.
I think, yeah.
Can I ask one more question real quick?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Lance, I'm curious, you'd be a better, you probably can answer the question completely, but give me a mental picture and like a pie chart. Once that RSD is approved by the council, what rights on a pie chart, how many rights are shifted to the owners versus the county at that point in time? Can you get, give a guess on that?
Well, okay, so I would say that the, they would have the entitlement, it was planning word, legal word, for 750 units. And if they do these things...
They get it.
These elements that are in the development agreement, that mean our subdivision ordinance, then they would have to be approved.
So unless we have...
So a big item is two points of access, because that's in our code, and it's something we're requiring before, too much development goes on, and we've got to work some, but, and, and that's a big deal.
So is it fair to say 50/50 at that point in time? Once that's been passed, they can start kind of pushing their rights that way? My, again, my concern is time.
Well, I wouldn't say it's a, that's it, they have the entitlement, they have the right, so after you...
They have 100%.
To 750 homes.
As long as it meets our code in the development agreement.
With the development agreement as the controlling document.
Which is yet to be written.
Yeah, but I mean, other areas of the county have, we have zones all over the place that are, they're entitled to that. If I have 100 acres and 820, I'm entitled to four lot, or five lots, five 20 acre lots, I could do that.
The development agreement is the application.
So that's my entitlements there. That's what we're changing from this, from the forestry zone and the M160 zone to the RSD, and so, so you're giving them the rights to this.
Right.
The, the development agreement is the application, right? I mean, that's...
It's part of, yes.
Part of, right. So we really need to get access to that, that document.
It's...
I mean, if, if we could maybe get one printed form...
I can email that to you.
I'm not printing it on my printer. They, um, no, I want to help, Steve, I want to make sure that you, you got it before...
You have the information you need.
Yeah.
How long would it take to print?
Again, my concern is not with what's already there, my concern is what's going to happen once this RSD is passed. Because they, they've got their A, B, C, D, how many different zones have they got? You know what I'm saying?
All those, those letters, yeah.
And at that point in time, they can, they can just go in and blanket the roads and do whatever they want, and they're, we're kind of hard-pressed to say anything about it.
I just want to make sure that you see the details, that, that you have an opportunity to read the details that are in there, because that's basically the development agreement.
Which hasn't been written yet, that's my point.
No, it has. That, that was what was, that's why I'm trying to get you printed, so you can take a look at it.
Or look on it online, yeah.
Yeah. It's...
So give me the timeline if it's, clue me, and then what is the timeline on the roads?
He, when they were here, they said they were planning on putting all the infrastructure in.
The next two years, they said?
Two, five years, five years.
They, they can't do anything till it's approved to do it.
Yeah.
But I think they said five years.
First approval is general plan, rezone, RSD, right? Same thing. Then, then they, and they're already up there doing work and investigations at soils and all sorts of things like that. Once they hit the rezone, the RSD approved, now they've got the entitlement rights, they'll start doing lots of studies and, and infrastructure improvements. I mean, the well and the pump system, all sorts of things like that. They'll have to start working on their districts for water, sewer, fire, as proposed.
Yeah, they're, they're going to establish those districts.
This may change with, through the public hearing process, but as they propose it, they would start doing those elements at some point. And I think they want to do it as quickly as possible, but it's a giant project, it'd be a couple years down the road, then they would say, all right, we want to start building this home, like ski lodge, or the golf course, or whatever.
Is that when they come in with the concept of it, or is that not part of it?
No, they've got the concepts in the development agreement right now.
In the development agreement.
They come in with the preliminary.
Right now.
Okay.
So we've got the concept, that's what they've...
That's all considered in that?
You know, we, they've got ski runs figured out, and they've got the development areas figured out, and the densities of those different development concept areas.
So basically...
What they don't know is, is in area D, we're going to put, you know, this is where the homes are going to sit. They haven't got to that level of detail, they don't know exactly where the roads could be. I actually think they, they probably have a good idea, but they haven't finalized it yet.
They know where the main roads are going to be.
And that's not part of this, this application.
So basically, this one is, in a sense, is a final approval?
Yes. Rezoning the property for...
That's my concern, that's what I'm saying.
It's not final, not for the subdivision part of it, but it...
Well, it's a final approval for the...
The rezone, the resort special district.
For the use.
For the use, not the development. We're still seeing preliminary...
And we'll give you the details of development.
So, here we have, if I may, here we have these ski resorts being built, we've got the, where the tramways created, we've got golf courses left out, and, again, the economy goes south, and they don't have the buyers. And I guess that's just to be expected over the economy, you have fast times and slow times, we're just gonna, are we saying that we're good with that as a county? We just work with them, let them?
Me...
Cause I don't know that they have the finances to do all of that and keep it. That's my question.
Can maybe the applicant can, can you get a message, the applicant, maybe to have a, a rough timeline? And is, is their financial statement part, is that required?
We do not require that they show their financial solvency in our ordinance.
But I'm, they'd probably be willing to talk.
Well, and, and so, this is the, this is a dialogue of the public hearing process. Here's what they've submitted, here's what we think of what they submitted, and the areas we have for concern, and the changes we would like. Now, the ball's back in there for it. So, we, but we've got to do that at a public hearing, have that open process. And, and the, and the rezone, we don't require that level of detail on, on the rezone, generally speaking. The development agreement actually goes into a lot more detail than a typical rezone request.
How much more detail do you think we'll see on the development agreement? Quite a bit more? So, we're seeing maybe...
Really?
Maybe 10%?
From what you're talking about, from the generals that you're talking about now.
We're seeing maybe 10% of it now, and then...
Yeah, you're seeing, I mean, like...
The development agreement?
The application is the development agreement, right? The application is the development agreement, it's there.
It's there. The development agreement is in the application.
I heard you say that.
But it does not say where the roads are. It does not say this will be the home, it doesn't have subdivision information at all.
And it'll be a preliminary.
They would come in and do preliminary, applying.
I, I guess, my concern, maybe I shouldn't say it, I think, because I could care less where the roads are gonna be, blah, blah, blah. You know, I mean, if we pass it, they're going to put it wherever they are, they gotta meet the county standards to make it work, and, you know...
Whatever the soils are.
Exactly, so, I, I just don't see that so much of an issue, it's more of, do we wanna let this happen?
Do we want a private resort up there?
A lot of these details are, are in the application, my concern is that we, we need, we need to dig into that application more, and make sure we understand before the 27th.
I agree.
So, if we don't know where that, that's located, we need, we need to, we need to get in there, cause it's, we've been looking at it for a long, for a couple of months now.
Yeah, so, so, so clarification, the development agreement has the concept plan shown here, there's, and the things you see on that concept plan would be required. But you don't see a whole, I mean, you see that there is a road system, you can't really see it here, but they have a road coming up, they have a road coming up here, and then they have the different areas, and the type of development where they're gonna put them. And the density of these different areas.
I get all that, Lance, and I think it's a great plan, I just want some assurance that they're gonna finish what they start. I don't...
How do we do that? That's a great, that's a great thought.
Unless he has a discussion...
Do we require them...
With the applicant.
Do we, do we require them, most development agreements to put money in escrow?
No.
Okay.
Can you do that?
I don't know.
That, that might be something to check with, just something to help the county, you know, in case something happens.
So, what you're giving is the entitlement and the zoning for 750 units. And in subdivision, you'll get into the assurances of improvements.
Well, and I guess, though, to me, by then, it's too late.
Cause they can't move forward without preliminary, right?
But on, once you, once you change the zoning and that, you, in a sense, to me, you've put them in the driver's seat, because now you're allowing them to do it.
Right.
I mean, you cannot stop them, as long as they meet what's...
The development agreement.
Yeah. And so, it doesn't fix Steve's concern that you're saying, okay, preliminary is when we're gonna get that confirmation with this. By then, it's too late, cause we've opened it up for them.
It's a, it's a tough thing, how do we do it for, for any rezone? How do we do it for any development, any subdivision?
Well, but, this, this one, to me, is a higher scale than a normal thing, was what you're trying to do.
It's a snow basin.
I, I totally agree.
Except it's private.
I don't know, I don't know how we do it, I mean...
Legally.
You outlined in your ordinance how you've said that you wanna do it. Morgan County hasn't adopted an ordinance that says, an RSD shall provide these elements, and then we will look at it and make our rezone decision. You don't have to do it, you've asked for these things, and they've provided them, we need to analyze them. The State of Parsons rezone from last month, on the Warner Pitt property.
Gave them entitlement.
We did not have a development agreement, we didn't have infrastructure. We knew they had infrastructure available, but that was essentially all we needed for that. But, like you said, that's 52 acres.
Yeah.
But it gave them entitlements.
But, the RSD application, as written in our ordinance, asked for a lot of things that we didn't require of, of the State of Parsons rezone. And so, in a way, that's the difference of this, is we set out a special set of requirements in our ordinance for this type of use, for this scale.
The State of Parsons, is that's not a Special Resort District, though?
It's a county center.
But this is a regular zoning.
Right.
You didn't have a traffic study, you didn't have an economic impact analysis, you didn't have an infrastructure plan. So, with the Resort Special District, we've asked for extra things, cause we know we're giving a big yes.
Yeah.
Is, to what you're, you know, what I'm hearing is your concern.
Yeah, to me, I mean, I know they do all that stuff, but say, two weeks, we pass it? Sit back and go for the ride, because you're on, you're, you're not gonna stop it.
I, again...
You, you got control, as much as what that development agreement lets you. And if something happens...
Escrow?
It's, I mean, it is what it is, you, you can't change it.
But we didn't...
I mean, you're gambling, in a sense, is this gonna benefit Morgan County down there, the future, or is there gonna be, you know...
Is it gonna cause harm to the county?
Yeah. And I, and I think, for me, with the whole thing, as far as what the county's gonna get out of it financially, is the least of the concerns. That, you know, if it's a positive deal, the money that the county gets, then's a win thing. It's all the other items that's the crucial part of this, that we don't wanna overlook.
There's certainly, there's certainly risk, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to capture what, what this risk is, I, I just...
I don't know if you can.
I don't...
Can I read this? This is Wikipedia, this, this is Yellowstone Club. So, in November of 2008, in the midst of the Great Recession, the Yellowstone Club filed for Chapter 11 bankruptcy. The club's priors, prior owners owed $343 million to creditors. They ended up selling it for 115 million. So, I think, when we're talking, I mean, we're talking big numbers there, as far as, like, but, you know, this isn't done and founded to think that, hey, this, it sounds great. And, you know, 2008, 2009, Yellowstone Club had been going on for quite a while, until nobody realized that they were in such financial dire straits at that point.
And so, we will analyze, and I appreciate you bringing in that concern, and we'll try and put that in the staff report.
Okay. So, our agenda item was to review the public comments. We added some of our concerns, summarize the public comments. Do we have any other concerns that we want Lance to address? Is really, anything further than that, this discussion needs to happen at the public hearings, and we're...
Just one, one more thing, I won't be here.
Okay?
I won't either, sorry.
You what? No, wait a...
At the next meeting, I'll be in Texas.
Yeah, I won't be here. My daughter comes home from her mission.
What, what date is the next meeting?
27th.
And I, I don't know what time she's coming, so...
And you're not gonna be here.
Yeah, I'm gonna be in Texas.
Haley will be here, well, no, even without you two, we'll have four.
With you four, and then Haley would be five.
Haley, Haley would be five.
I just want you to know that I won't be here.
I, we've had a lot of discussion with everybody here at the planning commission, so, there are opportunities for us to electronically attend the meeting, if you're interested in that, with, with staff, and... There is something to know about it, Lance, but, right?
No, not electronic. If we get it changed, according to, we had discussed it, yeah.
You could, in theory, vote, that's what I'm saying, right? Okay, just wanted to throw it out there. The next big thing for us is, thank you for this, this, we've gotta dig into this, make sure that we're rock solid on this. Nothing else on the agenda for...
Actually, we have another subdivision that we could...
Okay, so, we're gonna do that first? Okay, it's the one that I saw in the basement.
I have one thing I was kinda concerned about, I looked at the application, all their, their table showed lots of positive on the general budget, except for there was a negative on the, the roads, the road budget? I asked Becky about that, and she kinda explained to me that it's just the way they do the math on it. I'd like to see how, what, what that means, why the math ended up negative on the roads.
That was Louis Young's.
On Morgan County roads, affecting our budget?
Affecting our budget, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I missed that.
We'll look at it in the staff report.
No, it was Louis Young's analysis of it. Okay, I just saw it in the application, I asked.
That's a good sign.
I don't want any more impact.
We need to make sure we're trying to fit that in the staff report.
Yeah. Any other concerns? Will it erase tonight? Okay, so, then, the next step is public hearing, next meeting, 27th. Where do we wanna have it? You got it reserved over here?
I have the auditorium reserved. Given the crowd that we had last time, I think that seems like the perfect, I wanted to talk to you, my business items, I can't get it bound, but I'm on it.
Okay, we can, yeah, we can.
Is that, do you think we shouldn't do it there, or? Sound system is the biggest issue.
Sound and video.
Sound and video.
It is, the, they're both big, I...
I don't know if you can do...
I don't know if we can start here and see how many people show up, and then move it.
Do you have to video?
What's the logistics of that?
You don't have to.
Now, there'll be plenty of people, place, but...
Probably start at, I don't know.
No, we don't want, we would never do that.
I know, the last time when we went in there, that place was full. There was people standing up in the auditorium.
What, what application was that?
I don't know, you see, Yarkia, I can never say it.
Yarrika?
Yarrika. That place was packed.
Well, it's always the middle school, we did that once.
That was packed.
We've already noticed it for here.
For this address.
I noticed it for this room, it was easy to walk down the hall to the auditorium.
There was concerns, I don't remember if it was in this, in this, or where I read it.
It was in the comments.
There wasn't enough seats.
We're doing the best we can with the sort of resources we have.
Yeah, it's, there was something going on down there, wasn't there?
That's all we do.
First graduation.
Yeah, so, it was, yeah.
All right, well, anything, anything else you think about, let's, we'll talk about it, and attend item 10.
Okay.
Let's move on to item number nine, opposed town center ordinance amendments. Okay, so, we had our joint session with the county council, and we heard public comment at, at that time, and there were some concerns that, that came out of that. There were some practical things that, that people identified as potential gaps in our ordinance. Here's, my concern is primarily with the existing commercial zones. So, we've got commercial highway, what's that parcel? Commercial shopping, commercial highway, what else have we got in Mountain Green?
You have a light manufacturing.
Where's the light man, no, that's over by the airport, the right...
No, I think, light manufacturing is Nutraceutical, the zone, the current zone.
I think it's in...
Not, not the future land use, but in the current, maybe?
I don't think so.
Cause Nutraceutical, we gave them so they could, light manufacturing, I think, yeah.
When we changed it, you mean?
Business park.
No, that's the future.
Oh, that's future land use, yeah. There is no zone for business park.
There is a zone.
Okay.
The existing zone, yeah, light manufacturing.
Or they're CD?
That's Central Development, that's Dwayne Johnson's.
Yeah, but that's what, those are one of those CD...
Concern is, CH, LM, CS has no design, they have no architectural standards associated with them, that are cohesive with the town center. We've rezoned that parcel over there to town center. The reason I asked for it to be on the agenda for tonight is, essentially, we start the process of, of an ordinance. There's a, an ordinance in work. And the ordinance in work, my recommendation would be that we apply the town center architectural standards to those zones. So, CH and LM and CS, they, they were written a long ti, they were written a while ago, and we put a lot of effort and time into, kind of, trying to take the key concepts from the DAT architecturally, and, and put it into the town center zone, and we never captured it for those other zones. So, now, there's potential for those other zones to be developed, and it's, if, if there's no design standards, no architectural standards, it could potentially be not cohesive with town center. Like, it, it, they could just do whatever, really. There's no, there's no, there's no architectural standards at all. So, I'd like, I'd like to start the process of adding architectural standards to those, those three zones. Thoughts?
Are you referring to like, the TPC zone?
No.
No, CH, LM, CS.
Commercial shopping, so that we don't get a strip mall.
Yeah. So, if, if CH gets developed, we don't know what it's gonna look like, I know that they may have the best intentions, but there's no, we have no control.
We wouldn't have any control.
Any control over what it looks like. So, right now, there's permitted, there's a permitted use table, and they can just kinda do whatever. But we've got this really tight standard on this town center, and these other, as these other portions get developed, they could look completely different. So, I'm just trying to figure out a way for us to apply the town center architectural standard to those other zones.
Okay.
Yeah. And we don't have to decide how we do that tonight, I'm sure there's a couple of different options, but, what do you guys think about that? That was, that was what I heard the public saying during the meeting.
I think that's a good catch.
That is good. Just to figure out how to do it in the code, but that...
Let me, let me ask you guys this, as long as we're on the subject, I didn't, are we comfortable with the permitted uses that are already there? Do we wanna review?
You missed that one.
No, I can feel it. Is it worth at least reviewing, is what I'm saying?
A quick review?
It's been here, no, no.
Really wanna go there again?
No, honestly, no.
Not the new ones, the old zones.
No, not for the new ones, not for the new ones.
The old zones.
For the old zones, cause...
For the commercial zoning use table, right?
Yeah.
Let me just see what number, 19,000?
So...
It was 25.
In actuality, I, I mean, my initial reaction is, oh, please, no, but, in reality, I think it's been a year, or longer, I can't remember.
Longer, yeah.
And a fresh look at it is not a bad idea at all.
But we never looked at the old commercial zones.
Right.
Yes, we did.
Not, just glanced over them.
We really focused on the new, the new zones. We focused on, um, technical campus, town center, which we hadn't even had a zone for yet at the time.
Business park.
Business park, no, what was the other one?
But the, the newer zones, we spent most of our time, we...
Okay, so, if you remember that process, some of those zones were to become taken out.
But, but we're not doing that.
Right.
Right, that was, we were thinking we'd do that.
That was outstanding.
Right.
But it, our window was closed.
And I was actually talking to them. But, when you went through that commercial use table, you looked at every single zone? With that idea that the commercial shopping and the commercial highway were busy, were, um, gen, general commercial. So, you did technically look at those uses in these type of things, but it was under general commercial? Because that's how, that's how it was proposed? Was, commercial shopping and commercial highway were gonna go away and be combined into general commercial?
Well...
But, they didn't go away, so now we need to...
And my suggestion, I'm not in any way suggesting a two-year process. I'm suggesting that we look at, just review, as long as we're gonna open this thing up for a public hearing, let's re, let's review the, the current permitted uses in CH LM and CS, and make sure that they're still consistent. And maybe there's some changes, maybe we wanna subtract some things or add some things to this. And, the last thing, well, not the last thing, the next thing is, uh, night sky ordinance. Heard from the public...
Well, wait, you wanna finish on the town center discussion?
Okay, yeah, sorry, no, we'll start, we'll start on that, sorry, yeah. So, let's go back to town center. So, the, the first part was just about the commercial zones and, and the disconnect between town center.
So, design standards for the commercial zones?
Design standards, open up the tables for review.
Commercial use table to make sure it's, you know, I think it's a great idea.
And here's my proposal for, for town center. I wish Haley was here. Um, there's, there's, the, the public is concerned about potential gaps in the, in the town center, um, zone. I don't know, I don't know how we get to, to a balance, because right now, you've got two, it's, it was subdivided, right? So you've got two, with the, with the road, with the road, right?
So you're speaking of specific property, not zoning.
Speaking of, right now, of the fifty-two acres that we rezoned.
Okay.
As an example, there's two, two lots, right?
Yes.
So, potentially each lot could have a mix of commercial and, uh, as residential. So, the concern is, well, how do we, how do we, what is that mix? And I don't know that we can, we can get there.
Mix of what?
A commercial, uh, mixed use, versus, commercial versus residential. So, you know, we started off, Shane, what was some of the, it was, we were guessing like twenty-five percent, or, I don't know, we were, we were trying to come up with a number, and I don't think any number works. So here's my proposal, I want you to hear me, um, give me some comments on this. I propose that we amend it to say, um, that, that the mix is fifty percent commercial and fifty percent residential, with an option to negotiate down to twenty percent residential.
How would they negotiate now?
Development agreement. That the development, that...
Development agreement required.
Right, but so...
But didn't we...
There is no, there is no percentage right now. So in, in theory, they could come in, and on each parcel, they could say, well, mixed, mixed use is, is, and, and mixed use, in this landowner's opinion, is, I'm gonna put a subway and res, and, and residential homes. Right now, there's, there, we have very little control over that, because that still needs kind of a loose definition of mixed use.
We talked all about that, didn't we come up with something? We just left it?
We left it in development agreement, we said...
Just did the development agreement?
Yeah, we said send it to a development agreement. And what I'm proposing is we tighten that language up to say, yes, it still goes to a development agreement, but...
But you have to do at least this much.
We have to do at least fifty-fifty, but the development agreement can bring it down to twenty percent.
I'd simply say, rather than can negotiate down, would have to justify why only twenty, why a lower amount of fifty would be...
Right.
Provides economic analysis.
It's beneficial.
Or market analysis of actually, we would want to go lower. And a twenty seems pretty low, but...
Okay.
But we could discuss that, look at that in the draft.
So, with, 'cause I can't remember all the details of it now. When we talked about the multi-use net, did we have it so that they could live above the commercial?
There's mixed horizontal uses.
Or was it, I just, I don't remember how that, we set up the residential in that town center.
So it's allowed to have horizontal...
And vertical uses, mixed use.
So you can have single-family homes.
For mixed use, so we could have commercial down here and residential above it.
And you can have single-family homes, too.
But the whole development agreement, basically, we would be telling the developers, we wanna start with your, we wanna communicate to you that we're, our idea is that it's fifty-fifty, that's what we mean by mixed use.
I thought in town center, we took out single-family.
No, well...
Because we didn't wanna lose the space for a single-family residence. I mean, the type of home and that, it took away from our commercial.
So the, the purpose intent was, of the town center and the general plan, was to have mixed uses, but also to be compatible with adjacent uses?
Right.
And the compromise that I think we came to was, we'll allow single-family, 'cause we need a transition.
So, do we need to reword that in the sense of where we're gonna allow? 'Cause to me, that with the single family needs to be on the outskirts, and we tighten it as we come in.
Correct.
But I don't, does it say that?
No.
No.
Oh, it says you will transition, uh, from, from the adjacent uses, so...
So do we need to be a little bit more specific? The only reason I say that is, everybody's really good at twisting.
This is how it reads, Shane, is residential units as part of a mixed-use development.
And that's what we're trying to tighten up, but mixed uses.
So, it could be single-family.
I'm proposing we open it up and tighten it up a little bit.
I, I would be for tightening it up, 'cause I think it would, and I think, I can't remember which median it was, but that was some of their concerns, was that transition, and all of a sudden, they're not bordered on those in realms, right?
We'll do public hearing, get the public's input, and, obviously, and then prepare it.
You said start fifty-fifty, and then with the option, they can go down to twenty, and that's twenty commercial and eighty residential? Or did you have it flipped?
No, the other way.
No, I had it flipped.
Oh, you can't go up, you can't do more.
No, you're right, you're, no, you're right.
You don't want more commercial, that's...
Let's talk about that when, when we get another agenda for it.
I mean, that would be a, uh, much, I would be surprised if that would be viable.
But that doesn't fit the district.
Forty, forty of those fifty acres would be commercial.
So my proposal is, let's talk about it.
Okay.
I just wanted to float that idea of starting with fifty-fifty, negotiating down, and you're right, negotiating down to...
More residential, less commercial.
Whatever that language works out to be, my, my, I just recommend we open that up. So, that makes it a pending ordinance. So any applications would be subject to the pending ordinance, correct?
Correct.
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 So same with CH and CS and all that, that's...
So, yeah, it'd be good to have a, I still wanna talk about the mixed-use definition and the DA thing that's in the memo, but, uh, when we get done with this, toward the end of this, a motion to do that would be good. To direct staff to do all the things we're talking about, but, we're not now.
Right, okay. So, and the third thing I had was to draft a night sky ordinance, dark sky ordinance, for lighting.
Just before we leave town center, uh, how do you feel about staff's recommendation of a mixed-use development definition? And staff's recommendation for the timing of the development agreement? Just those two clarifications in town center zone, you're for those?
That sounds good.
So, could I get a motion on the town center discussion we had?
Okay.
For the pending, if you wanna do a pending ordinance, let's make it really clear that, uh, we should have a motion and a vote to direct staff to do that.
So we're gonna make a motion to recommend that staff... Draft, draft changes to the existing ordinance?
To the town center ordinance, uh, what I've heard tonight is that you wanna have staff do a, uh, to address design standards on commercial zones, to review the commercial use table, to address the percentage of mixed uses in the town center zone. Uh, it wouldn't be on the commercial zone, it would just be in the town center zone. Direct staff to, um, prepare a ordinance for adding the mixed-use development's definition and, um, the development agreement detail, uh, the timing of when it's on.
So we're just gonna talk about town center first, and then what about commercial?
And commercial zones?
It's kind of all...
And light manufacturing, you wanna go that as well?
That's a commercial zone, yeah.
Yes, thank, yeah, light, light manufacturing as well.
All light manufacturing.
Light be commercial zone, yeah.
What are the commercial zones that we're missing?
Commercial buffer.
We, we just call them commercial zones.
CD, yeah, so it's the neighborhood commercial, commercial buffer, your commercial shopping, general commercial, um, business park, highway commercial.
Would it be better to say commercial zones, all commercial zones?
Yeah.
That captures that, it's a good, good catch. And what?
And, and...
Light manufacturing.
And light manufacturing. That's a kinda, well, you have it. That, that part there. Architectural standards.
Yeah.
We're there, we're there. Just waiting for Shane to finish drafting it.
What, the motion?
Yeah.
You prepared for motion?
That's Debbie's job.
No, it's not.
And we're doing the night.
No, we'll do a separate one for the night sky, right?
I'll make the motion for everything Lance just said, if Bailey can write it down.
Say that again?
Okay.
I, I make the motion for that list that Lance just made.
So moved.
On the commu, commercial use for our next...
Town center commercial use.
Basically, it was all commercial.
Yep, did you have to do the night sky in this one, 'cause there's no lights?
Oh. Yeah, we, yeah, we'll have to include night sky in, in this as well.
Throw night sky or...
One of the agenda items.
Don't you want the night sky to be a different ordinance?
Right, but in the same motion, we're directing you to do multiple things.
Also night sky.
Yeah.
They will not all come together.
Bailey, can you read that back to us?
No, that, that's fine.
I can, it's really short. Member, member Stevens moved to the list Lance just made.
Put that in parentheses, then you insert it.
So, so member, member Stevens moved, just so we're all clear on the motion, member Stevens moved, um...
To direct staff.
To direct staff.
To work on.
Work on the list Lance just made.
Which is the architectural standards.
Yes, yeah, architectural.
Opening up the ta, the use tables for commercial use zones, night sky ordinance, definition of mixed use, defining how much mixed use we want.
Yeah, the percentages.
Percentages.
For mixed use to commercial.
Okay, is everybody clear on that motion? Anyone who wanna second it?
Usually Debbie writes all this down.
I know, we're trying to expand our, expand it out a little bit.
We got it, so it works good, don't vote.
Chris seconded, okay, sorry. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Bailey can listen to the tape.
Okay. So we have pending ordinance now for all of those things. Okay, item ten. I think, um, well, we already talked about...
We talked about the twenty-seventh moving to the auditorium.
Yep.
And staff will work on getting at least an audio system in there.
Do you want, do you wanna start here and then see how many people show up? Is it worth it?
Change, I think, no.
No, okay.
You won't be able to move everybody.
It'll disrupt your meeting.
You'll lose twenty minutes and the continuity, I think that would be bad.
We'll be here early to, well, four of us, anyway.
Anything else?
I don't have anything to, you guys have anything else?
I would be curious to know, we, we brought up Rivala, what's the status on that, are they moving ahead on their?
I have not heard anything since they received their, their...
The day before it's back.
Do you ever hear anything on Snow Basin, are they doing anything?
Uh, Snow Basin, you know, a year ago, we hadn't heard anything from Snow Basin. There was no, no information, no, we had no idea what their plans were. And then just really in the last two months, um, and I think Snow Basin was probably longer than that, but they would, at the chamber meeting and the, and more recent meeting with staff and council members, that Snow Basin is, is seriously looking at their development plans and, um, and is considering and weighing their options there, gathering a lot of information.
There's movement, but they don't wanna show their cards. That's what they said, they don't wanna show their cards yet, but there, there's movement.
Okay, thanks, that's all I had.
But again, if your cards are laid out in their development...
Correct.
So they've got entitlements of two thousand units.
Right, the sense I got was, they, they're not sure what they wanna start first, that's what they were saying.
That was Rivala?
No, Snow Basin.
Snow Basin, yeah.
Yeah, Rivala, we haven't heard anything.
A lot of public infrastructure.
Rivala has preliminary flat.
Pardon?
Rivala has preliminary.
Yeah, preliminary approval for, instead of seven hundred and something.
Right, but I mean, we haven't heard anything since.
They've reduced it. They've reduced it significantly.
I just wanna say from staff point of view, thank you to Gina and Bailey, especially the last few weeks. They've done a lot of hard work, and there's been a lot of issues, and it's been very crazy. I was gonna insert pictures of me screaming, yelling, but we don't have those, luckily.
Lot of bleeps.
I just, I threw up here the WPR open house documents, I mean, Gina's in particular, puts together, and, and I mean, you just don't, I, I just don't think everybody understands the amount of work it takes, I can't do it. Putting those documents together, making those presentations, the boards look nice, and everything coming together, and so we have a good open house. Wasatch Peaks brought a lot of boards as well, but I think it was a really good team effort getting all those documents together, and, um, just, it's, it's very good that we had that, and, for that meeting. That was a, to me, that's exactly what planning is about doing, is getting the public input ahead of time, so we can work on and address those concerns, and, uh, that was great. Bailey in particular, very well. I walked in the file room the other day, and you guys, I don't have a phone, but, but really, it's been the last, um...
At least two years.
Two years that Bailey's been here, and Laurel worked on it before then, we have a lot of paper files, and, um, which you can't appreciate in this picture, but, but the space in between these two, these two things, there's empty space here, and between the file cabinet and the bookshelf, there's, there's at least twelve more inches wide, 'cause we were able to get almost the whole, Bailey, I fought her every way, all the whole way, but they got it cleaned out, and, and anyway, just, there's a lot of hard work going on. Dave, the building official, is also just, just taking care of stuff, the permits come in. You know, we have issues, but we're trying to do things, but we got a really good team right now, and, so, we appreciate all the hard work.
Yeah, I, I wanna echo, I wanna echo what you said, but, again, from a different perspective for staff, we come in here every, twice a month, you know, and apart from, Debbie lives here with you, but, apart from, apart from the dialogue, we have the emails and the texts and the phone calls in between, apart from that, we kinda come in here like, hey, it's our show, and you guys do all, really all the work, and, and we sincerely appreciate, and, and we know how much you do, and, um, sometimes we're just here to control the crowds, and, but, we sincerely appreciate, and we know...
We, I just wanna, I just wanna add that, we definitely know what you're doing, we appreciate it every time you come in here. Don't ever, ever feel like we don't know that you guys are doing, doing all the heavy lifting, appreciate that. You have a lot of homework to do the next two weeks.
Yeah.
You have a lot of homework to do the next two weeks.
We do, yeah.
And, and, and the door is open, if you have questions on anything, I just wanna get this on the record while we're talking. Please come talk to me. Well, I may not be happy, but I will, I'd be happy to talk to you.
But, uh, I think you guys are really good to work with, so, I appreciate that you always answer questions, so, or, helps.
Thanks for bringing that up, that's important that we do that, we don't do that often enough. We show up here and battle through the public and forget that we're all in this together. Turn, drive this bus somewhere. Okay, anything else? Nothing else. Does anybody, have you guys submitted any changes for the minutes?
Yes, does anybody, have you your question?
I do not have any.
I wanna thank Bailey, that, those minutes were impressive.
I told her I was getting frustrated, I couldn't find enough mistakes, I was like, I've got two pages without a mistake.
And I was going cross-eyed reading, oh... And I was going cross-eyed reading all those.
Yes.
She did a.
I watched out those minutes and listened to it and rewound it and rewinding it and rewinding it.
She did a remarkable job.
It took two days.
Because there was a lot of comment in those minutes, yep.
It's hard to decipher and listen to some, some of the comments, but just to relive that whole night all over again.
Yeah.
It's really different, so.
She did a great job.
Thank you.
And you know what, all of us, we, we leave after a meeting like last time, we just kind of leave. We're like, okay, I just need to go, let the adrenaline calm down a little bit. But we forget that every, most meetings are like this, pretty boring, a couple of people show up. Tina's always here, but the, um, nobody really comes out for the mundane kind of, kind of stuff. They only kind of come out to, and sometimes, most times it feels like they're attacking us. But I don't know what happened last time, but man, we, you guys pulled off a meeting that was, it was, it was weird. It was really well. I mean, it was, it was kind of bizarre. I mean, I pray that it happens again next time and the next time, the next time, but, um, I, I don't, I think we should reflect a little bit on that. Man, this stuff in between, kind of, you know, talking with each other, respecting each other's opinions, all that stuff builds relationship, it builds equity like an account, you know what I mean? If, if I don't talk to Steve at all and then we come in here, it's hard to have a discussion because we, you know, we don't have anything to draw off of. So, all of that builds up to those one meetings that we have that are just mind-blowing. And we pull it together like a team like I've never, I've never seen before. It's, it's pretty remarkable. All of us, you know, staff and us, anyway, I still, I still walk away scratching my head going, I'm glad it happened that way. But it did, it worked out.
I move, we approve the minutes.
I second. All those in favor?
Aye. So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That escalated quickly. You guys get your rest for the next meeting.